Good evening. I'm Marge Buchanan, and I'm the Deputy Zoning Officer of Havford Township, to bring the Planning Commission reorganization meeting of January 11th, 24, to order at 7:08. I'll call roll. Mr. Shannon?
Present.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Fior De Mondo?
Here.
Ms. Dobbs? Ms. Phillips? Mr. Montressor?
Present.
And I'd like to welcome Mr. Stephen Welsh, the newest member of the Planning Commission.
Here.
Okay, beginning with the appointment of Chairperson for the Planning Commission for 2024, is there a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate our existing chairperson, Dave Chapman.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll turn that meeting over to Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you, fellow members of the Planning Committee. Shall we start with the salute to the flag? And Happy New Year to everyone. Let's have a light to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America. General law, which is one nation, God, visible, liberty, and justice for all. Are there nominations for the other positions on the Planning Commission? First, the Vice Chairperson. Does anybody have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Maggie Dobbs to continue in that position.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Maggie Dobbs has perfect timing, as usual, has just arrived and is now present. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Maggie, congratulations. Are there nominations for Secretary? Any nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Stephen Welsh.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Congratulations, Stephen, and welcome aboard. Is there a motion to appoint a scribe to the Planning Commission for 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we appoint Marge Buchanan for scribe for 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Marge, congratulations. There's a typo. The next item is a motion to approve the calendar for the Planning Commission for 2024 on the dates that are set forth on the agenda, except 2024 rather than 2023. Is there a motion to approve that calendar? It's the first Thursday of every month, except July and Aug.
Second Monday.
I'm sorry, second Thursday of every month, except, I'm pretty sure, except July and August. I'm sorry. No, it's the second Thursday of every month, including July and August. Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those meetings shall convene. Shall we go along with 7 o'clock, which is what we've done in the past, or does anybody have any feeling one way or the other about changing the time?
I move to continue starting the meetings at 7:00 P.M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start at 7 o'clock on the second Thursday of each month. Let's move on to the plans, development plans. The first is Jim Miller Holdings LLC, preliminary final land development plan for 2224 and 2228 Havford Road. Is there anybody here to speak for Jim Miller Holdings? Seeing no one will. I will table. I don't think we need a motion. Well, motion. I'll move to table. Jim Miller.
Marge, what's, you know what the clock is on that, on the 90-day clock that expire on that? Okay, they were in our, they came in December, right?
Yeah, November.
Did we have a meeting this? Yeah, we had a meeting in December. So they would have submitted, the earliest they would have submitted would be in November. So we probably have a little more time left on the 90-day clock.
So is that the proper procedure to table it? I know that our township engineer has some written comments. Is that something to be addressed now or not useful?
We should get the date that they were, that they submitted their application. We could alternatively reject it, which maybe they'll show up later in this meeting. Chuck, do you have any idea what their plan was for tonight?
I have not heard from them myself. But there is a letter here from them dated December 11th, so that's probably, I'd venture to guess, within that week, they probably submitted.
Yeah, I believe we actually did get an email that they were supposed to have somebody here tonight.
Well, there's some trees down blocking some roads. Maybe they're on the way.
There was a very large accident on 76, so maybe if we just...
Yeah, let's just table it for now and...
Come back to it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, good idea. Okay, moving on. Next item. The next item is McGoldrick Electric. Anybody here to speak for McGoldrick Electric? This is 83 South Eagle Road zoning sketch plan review. And I have a request. At the beginning, could you just give us a quick overview of what it is that they're planning to do?
Yeah, I was gonna do that because it is a fairly complicated project. I have multiple zoning, two parcels. And what I'm looking for is generally suggestions on how to move forward with this project. So what I have here is a parcel on... I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking into the microphone. I, we have a parcel that we're looking...
What is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Newton. I'm a professional engineer with Cairns and Associates. So we have a parcel at 83 South Eagle that my client wants to further develop, obviously. So I, the parcel, there's actually two separate parcels. One is zone C3. It's about 40,000 acres. Another parcel is zoned R6, and it's about 35,000 acres. The existing use on the parcel that zones institutional is it's a commercial property is what it's used for, even though the zoning is institutional. Okay, there are two buildings on that parcel.
Excuse, I'm sorry. Maybe I misunderstood. When you started out, one is zoned institutional and the other is zoned R6?
No, both are on the institutional parcel. I'm sorry, if I misspoke.
And neither is zoned commercial?
Neither is zoned commercial. However, some of the permitting that has been issued for that parcel, it calls it out as C3 zoning. So it's very confusing for us. In fact, Chuck pointed out in his review because we did call it out as general commercial. Okay, so so we have this parcel. It has the institutional has two buildings on there. One's approximately 6,000 square feet. One is about approximately 2,800 square feet. The 2,800-square-foot building is going to be demolished. It is maybe 20 feet behind the right-of-way line of South Eagle Road. The existing building, which is used as an office, is to remain. The R6 parcel is a landlocked parcel.
Which, you could just explain which properties.
Oh, it's confusing, isn't it?
And they, and they, and they both face Eagle Road.
No, one is landlocked. So so this parcel right here separates why this parcel line is zoned institutional. It is not used for that function. It is simply an office use. Okay, I have a residential parcel. The zone's residential, R6 residential. It is used as, for parking. There's approximately 5,000 square foot of asphalt on there and up to maybe 10,000 square feet of stone slash dirt that is used for parking. What my client would like to do, okay, is to demolish the existing building that is along South Eagle Road. That's about 2,800 square feet. Okay? And and build six smaller buildings along the north pocket of the property for, for office slash garage use. Okay, this building, that's to the rear of the property, which is approximately 6,000 square feet total, will remain an office complex. Now, the R6 parcel, this one, my client would like to place parking there because he's losing a lot of parking with this development here. So he wants to place it on the R6, which is the current use and permitted use of that parcel. Okay? Also, this parcel also has some stormwater facilities, some stormwater facilities on there, some utility lines go through there, and so forth. So what I'm, I received a review letter from your engineer, and I'll go over that briefly. There are a lot of zoning issues that he discusses. Now, some are pretty minor that we can clean up with drafting and so forth. Some of them, I would just like your suggestions as to what you think would work best for us.
First thing you're gonna have to do is change the zoning. If you're gonna be using it as a commercial property, you should change it to commercial zoning.
I think it should be. I agree. Here's where I'm going. I think the lots should be combined and the zoning changed. Now, my thoughts are to change the zoning first, then combine the lots.
Yes, you have to change the zoning first before you can do any proposed development on there. So that's the first step.
Yeah.
And you would, you would change the R6 section to C3 and the INS section to C3, which is consistent with the
Use.
surrounding zoning.
Yes.
Is it in fact consistent or are the properties surrounding residential?
No, there's multiple uses around there.
Residential.
The zoning use on the parcel south is institutional. However, when I was out there, there were cars parked all over the place. It looks like a, some type of auto body shop. Okay, behind our parcel is residential. It's R6. Okay? Along South Eagle Road is C3. So I think that's all the parcels and I, like I said, there are residential units behind both these parcels in this area. So that is the zoning and use in that, in that particular area.
There, on the building that you're proposing to demolish, there's a sign on the front of the building. I believe it's PHS or something like that. A little history, and this goes back close to 50 years. There used to be, that parking area that's in the rear of the property, they used to store trailers there. And they were, I believe, medically related. They were like, I don't know what the purpose of the trailers were, but they were used for medical purposes. I think the building out in front was originally some type of business that was associated with the medical profession. Okay, and that's probably how they got to use that ground, even though it was zoned institutional.
I, I kind of suspected as much.
And I remember there was quite a bit of discussion with the storage of those trailers on that back parcel and with the adjacent neighbors who lived to the east. But that was, like I said, 50 years ago. There are probably all new people now. Now, there is some history here as far as how that property was used.
And that's the asphalt piece?
Yeah. Yeah, there's historic trailers. I mean, you look, they have all kinds of holes back there. It was a well-lit area. And there is some storm drainage back there. What, so yeah, your first step would be to petition the township to rezone the property. And it has to be a zoning classification that's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. We can't do spot zoning or anything like that. We don't want anything in there that would draw attention from a legal standpoint.
Okay, I, my thoughts are generally C3, which is what's on permits that I've seen issued for both these parcels. Okay.
Excuse me, Angelo?
Yeah.
Can I chime in here?
Sure.
Please. There is some evidence that the township found that it, that is general commercial, C3 zoning in there. The parcel that fronts Eagle Road. Now, if you go look in the zoning map, though, it shows it as R6, which somewhat doesn't make sense.
The parcel that fronts Eagle Road is INS.
INS. It shows it as INS.
Right.
So the township has to do a little more investigation on that, too, to confirm that it is, it is, would be the C3.
But regardless, the piece in the back is R6?
Correct.
Okay, so that would have to require a zoning change.
Yep.
Okay, because you're not going to put houses back there.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure it was clear, though, the other parcel.
So I mean, wouldn't the path of least resistance, if you're going through a zoning change for the back parcel, to clarify the zoning for the front parcel? Because you have to go through the motion. Might as well do it for the whole property.
Makes sense.
Okay, the other thing is, and this goes to open space. I don't know if you're familiar with the open space requirements in township, but for any subdivision or land development in Dover and Agar, you're supposed to provide open space. And the process is that you're to present for the township two sketch plans, one with the required open space and one without the required open space. You present those to the Planning Commission and eventually the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners will decide whether or not they want the open space or if they want a fee in lieu of open space. Now, if they choose for the fee in lieu of open space, you're looking at, I think, around $75,000. So it's something you want to make sure you follow the procedure. Make sure you present the right plan when the time comes after you do your zoning change.
My client's here, and certainly after, I was not unaware of that regulation. There's so many regulations, I can't keep track of them.
It's in your letter, right, Chuck? Or no, it's not in your letter. It is?
I just saw the, in the letter, I just saw the comment that states you can either have recreational area or fee in lieu of.
Right.
Not that there were...
But it's not the applicant's choice. It's the township's.
Okay. Oh, I was...
It makes a big difference as far as what you end up building on this property.
My personal opinion is my client certainly wouldn't want a recreational area back there. He's not going to want people on the property. But I'll have to talk to him, see how he wants to proceed. And obviously, we will prepare a second sketch plan showing recreational areas, so you can make a judgment.
Right. That's what, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, I was unaware of that. Okay.
Another concern that repeatedly comes up is the preservation of older heritage or specimen trees. And I drove by, I'm not sure I was looking at the right property, but I thought I saw older trees on that property, big trees. And if you can do, anything you can do to preserve those trees, maybe use your open, in the design, would be, would be helpful, would help.
I'll consider that. Where I remember, trees were right on the property line, but they were on the adjacent property. Just slightly over. But you know what? We have a survey. I'll check the point, data points, see where those trees are exactly. Yes, I agree. Preserve them as much as possible. But I think the trees that you're referencing are on adjacent property. Okay.
I actually had a question about the building to be demolished. It looks like there's an, like the existing stone house in the center is made of quality construction. And the Historic Commission had noted that it has original stained glass windows in the stairway that are surviving. Do you know how old the existing stone house part of the building is in the center? It looks like there's like a sort of 70s addition, blanking it on each side. So it's like wrapped in an addition, but you can still see the side, like the main entrance is the original house.
I do not know the answer to that. I will have to ask my client to see if he even knows at this point. And then we'll probably have to do some homework on that particular question.
Is there any way that that existing stone portion of the building could be reused since it's such an old quality construction piece?
I have no idea.
Jim, could you come up here, please? Better if you speak to the microphone and identify yourself.
Jim McGoldrick, from McGoldrick Electric. So the, the building that's there, that addition that you're talking, is the ugliest thing
Oh, the addition.
ever. So in order to save that, the older part, which I believe was built like in the 20s or 30s, they said, it would just, we'd have to do something to that front end, which money-wise, and the whole entire place inside is antiquated. But we, we, my nephew and myself are partners. We talked about those stained glass windows. Well, there's a company downtown that actually comes and can save them. If they're actually like worth anything, they can take them and restore them if they're that old.
Thank you.
My wife will take them if no one else.
All right, I'm gonna go through important points of your engineer's letter, unless there's other questions. It sounds like there is.
I'm sorry, I'm just, can you clarify what the proposed use of all of this is? This is a very unusual proposal and I, I don't understand what the existing, and if you said it earlier, I have, I'm having a hard time hearing you, the existing structure in the back there. If you can explain what that is and what it's used for and what the proposed garage structures are going to be used for and what the parking is for. Like, I don't understand how this ties together.
Okay, so there's an existing building to the rear of the property. And that is used as an office complex. Right now, there's currently six, it's about 6,000 square feet total. There's six employees there. Okay. An office. No, there's two stories. Yes.
McGoldrick Business.
Correct. Okay.
So all of the, all of the new buildings are two-story with a garage and an office?
Yeah.
What's the purpose of the additional parking if you have parking garages for each of the offices?
Yeah, I never asked my client. However, it's my belief, just, just to meet regulations. This parking, which I didn't explain earlier, proposed parking is basically to meet the regulation to, for this particular building, the code requirements. Even though there's only six employees, it would require 30 spaces. That is the function of that parking. Now, this facility would have a garage on the bottom, which people could park. Okay, and there's two along each, along the side of each building. It just overflow parking if it would be necessary, is what that's for.
And those are for rentals to other companies?
Yes.
Basically, for the small contractor. You start it out. You set it up. You know, place for banner. Basically, for like painters and small contractors. Out front of the house.
There's an oil field going on there. Is there?
Right now, it's gas. Before, there was oil.
I'm sure during construction, it'll get removed. And if there's any mitigation necessary, they'll take care of it at that time.
Do you know, often, what the setback is, your setback on the...
Yes, I do.
That comply with the 15-foot?
It complies with the 15, it complies with the 15-foot. It complies with the front yard. On this one side yard, it complies. On the side yard that's adjacent to the R6 zoning district, it does not. So obviously, yes, yeah, that would disappear. And if I looked at it as commercial, it wouldn't comply at all. And that might be a problem for me also. So commercial parcel C3 would have a lot more dimensional restrictions on me. So I gotta see how that will come into play, especially with this back building. It would, depending on what the, what the zoning is, it would create an existing use issue with that. Okay.
There's a lot of, it looks like there's a lot of existing paving that's going to remain in front of those buildings. Is there some reason why you need all that paving in front of those buildings?
We could probably get rid of some of it. And I'll investigate to see what we can remove.
You're gonna be looking at a significant amount of stormwater management for this project. Less than impervious you have.
Oh, no, absolutely. I can't state this explicitly that with this proposal, we're reducing by, I think it's four or five percent, the impervious that's out there. Because a lot is, somewhere close to 90% impervious, will be down to around 85%.
Well, just thinking aloud, maybe there's something creative you can do with all those parking spaces that...
I didn't investigate the stormwater issue at this point because we're so early in the process. But yeah, it's something I'm gonna have to look into, talk to my client about post-meeting. All right, unless there's other questions, I'm just gonna briefly go over your engineer's review letter. There was a comment, one, there is an issue about what we zoned it. And I think your engineer brought up the fact that there, it might be zoned G, C3. I'm going to proceed as, at this point, as if it's zoned institutional based upon the zoning map. And then obviously, when we go to... And then obviously, when we go to the zoning board, we're going to have to ask them for clarity on what the actual zoning is at that parcel, on the one that fronts 83 South Eagle Road. Comment two refers to a parking lot on the residential parcel, zoned parcel. Now, it already is a parking lot, so we're not changing the use. And in my opinion, we're actually slightly reducing the area for parking. So are we making, in my mind, I'm making it less of a, of a issue for concerning the zoning ordinance. Three was just an oversight on my part concerning the use of the existing building. Since it isn't on the plan, it is office. Okay?
Excuse me, on point two, you could reduce it, but you still have the zoning issue.
I'm going to have some zoning issues.
Okay.
Yeah, I am aware of that.
If they combine the lots and rezone it, then they don't have a zoning issue.
Right.
Yeah.
The fact that it's a little less parking doesn't obviate the zoning issue.
The current zoning issue.
Yeah.
I think item number four, I'm not sure how to handle that, because I got an existing non-conforming use. What it says is, if I have a building that doesn't comply with zoning, and this building doesn't comply with either institutional, by dimension of this yard, that should disappear. And if it's G3, definitely wouldn't comply with those restrictive requirements. So number four, I would, I, we're going to have to ask some type of relief from the zoning board to allow further development of a parcel that has an existing non-conforming use.
But if you have the property rezoned, that nonconformity goes away. You said that the rear yard is more than 15 feet.
15 feet is the institutional.
15 feet is the, it's a C3.
I had a different number, much larger number.
That's my book's one. Right there.
For C3. Do I have that written here?
I'm looking at the C3 right now. It says, "Front yard, 20 feet, side yard, seven feet minimum each for each building or group of attached buildings. Rear yard, 15. Impervious surface ratio, 75% max."
Okay, I was mistaken then.
Rezoning the property saves you a lot of zoning issues, I think.
Okay. Number five is just about providing, combining the parcels and the dimensional and area requirements. And I will take care of that during the zoning process. Item number six, the building height, which I didn't document on there, it's obviously going to be higher than 18 feet. I'm guessing somewhere between 20 and 25 for a two-story building. So obviously, I'm going to need relief from the zoning board on that. Comment number seven involves landscaping. And certainly, when, if we get through the zoning process in a positive manner, then at that point, we will prepare landscaping plans and so forth to deal with, you know, visibility to the adjoining properties. Okay. Number eight, off-street, off-street loading. I will provide a particular place that's 60 feet by 12 feet. Okay? That was drafting error on my part. Okay? Comment number nine, that there is open space along the property frontage to provide a landscape strip. So when we get to the land development slash subdivision phase, we will do so at that time. Okay? Comment number 10, any, we, I did say this earlier, but we will provide landscaping, some type of buffer, in particular along the residential parcels, and make sure they're not impacted by this proposal. Number 11, lighting, again, that will be developed at the time that we are preparing land development or subdivision plans. Comment 12.
Is this plan, is the plan that this property would be used at night?
Okay, under subdivision land development, at some point, if we get to where we can do a subdivision, if we get through zoning, I am going to recommend to my client that they ask for a waiver of a traffic impact study. Comment number 13, I believe we discussed earlier about the recreational area and so forth, and a fee in lieu of. So obviously, I'm going to have to prepare a second plan showing some type of recreational area. I'll have to review the ordinance on what they want specifically for that type of facility and so forth. Comment 14, facilities planning, sewage facilities planning module, it's a later date, we obviously will submit that. And then 15, stormwater management, the same thing. It's some later date, we're going to have to submit that. But it will be post-zoning hearing board. So my thoughts are, at this point, based upon the input that you've provided, is it better for me to come back with a second plan showing a recreational area or to go straight to zoning? That's how I'm seeing this develop at this juncture.
Why would you go to zoning first? What would you ask the zoning board for?
Well, obviously, we discussed the changing in zoning for this.
I wouldn't go to the zoning hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the, that's the Board of Commissioners who approves zoning changes.
Okay.
And actually, if in fact, the grounds that front Seal Road is institutional, that falls on this board to recommend to the Board of Commissioners what it should be rezoned to, if the institutional use goes away.
Okay.
Okay? So.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. Learn every day.
You might want to talk to an attorney, just to get their feel for things. But my sense is that you want to get the zoning districts resolved. And then based upon that, you repair your two sketch plans.
Okay.
Okay? That way, you can present a plan that's relatively clean as far as zoning issues go.
Okay. Yeah, because there's.
It's much too confusing to try and develop a plan based upon INS and R6.
Yeah, I'm, well, I couldn't even put the combined table together. You know, with conflicting interests and so forth.
In the meantime, if the township determines that that ground is in INS, but if it is C3, then it makes your task a little easier, I think.
Okay.
Anybody else have any different feelings about that?
Oh, no, that's, I mean, if you need to go before the Board of Commissioners to request a rezoning, that's going to be item number one. Get those items addressed. There's a couple other outstanding zoning regulations. As Angela mentioned, your zoning will, or I guess your need for relief will diminish if you are able to rezone into the C3 district, that existing building, if you're saying it complies with the setbacks and that takes care of some of the additional matters. My question still kind of revolves around, so assuming that you get all of your rezoning in place, and assuming that you consolidate these, the proposal would be to consolidate these lots and have them both under the same zoning district. I still have some questions about the use of the property and having multiple buildings. I don't know if you've spoken with the new zoning officer about the use of the, of multiple buildings and having each building be for a lease for a different sort of contractor or service. I, you mentioned that you would be seeking a waiver request when it comes to a SADO plan for a traffic impact study. I would not be in support of a waiver such as that if we're talking about having, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different businesses, several different offices with several different schedules. We're talking about, you know, contracting companies that have utility vehicles, that have heavy machinery, that have employee vehicles. So if we have employees coming to the site, to park at the site, to take the vehicles out for their jobs, and then coming back at the end of the day, we're generating a lot of traffic at this facility that would almost certainly need that traffic impact study. So I would just caution you that this is going to be more of a use intensity than what is currently there now. And it needs to be properly adjudicated and vetted for its impact on the surrounding community, particularly because you are abutting a residential district. So that could have a significant impact. And also, depending on the timing, contractors work early in the morning, they go out early in the morning, those machines operate early in the morning. That's going to have an impact on a residential adjacent district. So I would, I would just make sure that that is something that you are aware of as you're discussing this with your client and how to proceed with the application. So I would just confirm that you can in fact have seven different buildings for seven different, I mean, they're leasable properties. I don't know what the economics are in terms of having multiple buildings versus having a larger warehouse-style building with multiple tenants within a shared building space. You're building a lot of walls. Again, I don't know what your concept is. So that's for you to determine and your client to determine. But the general layout here just seems a little bit, I know it's an odd-shaped site. It's just a different sort of development than we're used to seeing, I think. Not in any good way, bad way, or indifferent. But I really would, would have significant concerns when this gets to a SADO application about the traffic impact and the neighborhood impact of all of these different commercial activities operating with seven different operators.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Are there any comments from the people here who would like to speak? Does anyone here wish to speak? Any other comments from the commission?
Just, to me, this smells like an office park, okay? Of course, you mentioned the word "office" is on your plan. But the ordinance does allow, the C3 district does allow other uses, food stores, gift shops, personal service shops, things like that. So this is more a spec type of arrangement, unless Mr. McGoldrick is lucky enough to have six people who say, "We wanted a building." But as far as having six buildings, there's nothing in the code that prevents that from happening. The ordinance says for one or more of the following uses. So it's kind of, it's almost like a, an office complex with individual units for different users.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newton? Next item on our agenda is, rolling right along, 14 Claremont Boulevard, preliminary final subdivision land development plan. 14 Claremont.
Does it help if I put those up on the screen, or you don't need that? Plans?
I'm sorry.
Does it help if I put the plans up on the screen, or you have them all in front of you at this point?
I think we have them.
Okay.
If anybody would like them on the screens.
Okay, good. I'm more comfortable without a screen myself. Just in my absence.
Same here. Could you just tell us your name and address and your role here?
Yeah, my name is Jim Buckler, and I represent the applicant, Karamanico Homes. Mr. Karamanico, Dan Karamanico is sitting in the back. He's the principal of Karamanico Homes. And Gus Hootman of GD Hootman &amp; Sons, who is the project engineer, is here as well to answer any questions. I'll make my comments brief.
Your name again, please?
Jim Buckler, B-U-C-K-L-E-R. This is a subdivision of a parcel of ground into three building lots, residential building lots. It's located in an R5 district. I would start by saying that the, as far as I understand, and I don't think there's any comments from the township engineer to the contrary, that this application is fully zoning compliant. The lots, the minimum lot size is 5,500. These lots are average about 10,000 square feet apiece. They're about 58 feet wide. So they're well within the, and all of the proposed construction are well within the parameters for impervious and building coverage. I want to clarify a couple things about the, there was two. In our application, we had suggested we need a waiver of the two-step procedure. And I believe that's in error, as I look at the, at your zoning ordinance, because this is a subdivision of less than four lots that requires no new public improvements. It qualifies as a minor subdivision. And the requirement for a preliminary plan does not apply in this case. The other thing I wanted to mention is, there's a reference in the description of the application that it involves the removal of an existing house as part of the application. And that's not entirely true. The house has been removed, it's not there anymore. Pursuant to a demolition permit from the township, the house was removed before the application was filed. So there is, the existing condition, so I suppose we could have modified the existing conditions plan before we filed to show the house not there. That might have been an oversight. But the house and garage are not there anymore. Other than that, we have the township engineer's comments. We are fully prepared to comply with all of those comments. We agree with all of them, and we'll take care of them. Most of them are engineering issues, that things that need to be added to the plan. Obviously, we need to get a planning module approval for the additional houses. And we'll have to go to the Shade Tree Committee. Those are probably the two biggest things. It's not our proposal to provide any open space. I think providing open space in the backyards of three, it isn't really, we propose to pay a fee in lieu of the open space. It seems like the only rational thing to do in this case. So, but other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, fully compliant. And we're prepared to comply with all of the ordinance requirements. Mr. Hootman is here to answer any questions that anyone might have about the engineering. And I'm prepared to answer any questions, hopefully, that you have about anything else. The intention is to build three single-family homes. Mr. Karamanico has, in the last year, built two new homes on the adjoining properties, which were already separate lots at 4 and 8 Claremont. And the homes that are prepared, proposed to be built on this are about 2,900 square foot. A traditional two-story colonial, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage home on each of those sites.
Same house?
They'll be, they'll be similar, but they'll be articulated, so they don't look all the same. Let's put it that way. You know, I mean, they're a pretty similar house, probably, but it'll be articulated, so either color is in roof lines and things like that, so they don't look like they're the same house.
It wasn't clear based on the drawings and the plan, but will these homes have porches?
They won't have porches of any consequence. They'll have a small porch in front. I have, I have a drawing of the.
Renderings?
Well, it's not really, unfortunately, it's a two-dimensional drawing. It's not really a rendering of the.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
So our engineer had commented in his review letter, the applicant should conform, I'm sorry, confirm conformity of proposed setback to median setback lines. Is that, have you done that yet?
We have.
Or is that a "will comply"?
We have, we, we will, we will. We haven't done that yet, we will comply. And, and given the, if you look at the lots, we've set the houses right now at the front of the, of the setback, but the lots are so deep, if, if the setback has to be deeper than that. I don't think it will, by the way. I think those homes along that street are pretty close to the street, so, but if, if we were probably going to move them back 10 or 15 feet anyhow, so it won't be a problem at all to conform to that. So that's a "will comply", but we haven't actually done it yet.
So this, this is probably a comment that some of my other planning commission members might make, but I'm just going to jump into it. So it has been our pattern to comment on the fact that we are now seeing the development of these kind of basic model homes.
Right.
In the neighborhoods where we have historic character with a diversity of housing styles.
Right.
And the fact that, so I did a, a Google Drive on the, the street. I think there's only one house on the entire street that has a front-loading garage, and it's a single car, front-loading garage, and you're proposing here, they're not even flipped, right? So the application shows three houses with the garage on the same side, so they're very cookie cutter, boom, 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 right in a row. These are, I don't know if they're wider than some of the other homes, because a lot of the homes on the street appear to be skinnier but deeper, and then they have the garages on the side. So I generally just have, would like to just express my concern that our infill developments are detracting from the overall community character of our existing neighborhoods, and the infill developments that we're seeing are not sensitive to replicating in any way, shape, or form that cadence on the street. Right? So we're, we're having completely different housing styles that break up a lot of that, that community character. With that said, I do wanted to note, one of the slopes of the driveway appeared to be almost 8% grade, right? Is that correct?
Right.
Are these driveways, so again, looking at other houses on the streets, some of the driveways, I think there's, the one that has the front-loading garage, I believe, is a split-level home where the driveway is cut into the slope, so it's a flatter grade driveway to accommodate then that split level, so it works out with the grade. What, what sort of accommodations, if any, are being made to accommodate the grade, and will these have basements?
Houses will have basements. It, the, the part of the accommodation, we've talked about this, and this was kind of one of the comments, we'll probably move the houses back somewhat, at least a little bit to, to catch the grade a little bit more, to take some of the grade away from those, from those driveways where, where they're 8% now. And that was one of the engineer's comments, is we had to, we would have to address that. So that would be, that would, I think that, that would be what we would expect to do. And that'll all get, you know, that'll all come out when the, when the grading and building permit application, to make sure we do that. But that's our intention, is to move some of those houses back at least a little bit to take some of that grade away, where that 8% was to catch, you know, to catch the grade in a short distance, at least when the first, they were first laid out.
Has there been any thought, so looking at the, the orientation of the driveways on the house, they're all on the right side of the house. It appears that there's on-street parking on this side of the streets. What is the distance between the driveways to accommodate continued on-street parking and between the driveway aprons?
Well, it would, it would, it would seem logically, if, if they're set right now, they would be about, they would be 50, 58 feet. There would be 58 feet between, from driveway to driveway, which is actually probably, actually optimizes, it wasn't the intention of that, but if you think about it, that optimizes, that's three spots basically between driveways. And any other configuration would give you a different, a different, but I, I'm not saying that's what our intention was, but that's a good question, and I think that the, the current layout would maximize the space between driveways for, for on-street parking.
And then shifting briefly to stormwater management, I read your stormwater calculations. I see this all the time where the stormwater calculations simply say that there is enough capacity in the infiltration bed to accommodate the proposed development, but there's no actual figure as to what the additional capacity is beyond what is being constructed at, at the initial construction. So between the driveway and the home, you get X amount of impervious cover, the basin can accommodate X amount of impervious cover, so what is the balance remaining for the future use of the homeowners? So that is something that I would be interested in having determined at this stage. To make future permitting easier for the homeowners and for the township, so that we don't run into additions or, you know, new structures, you know, sheds and whatever else is going to be built, decks and such, that will then cause the infiltration bed to be overwhelmed because it was not designed for that particular capacity. So to avoid them engineering headaches after they purchase the home, I would like to request that a number be given as to the maximum capacity of the infiltration beds and the, and the amount of impervious cover that's being constructed. And that, that can be done, obviously, I would like to see that on the subdivision plans, but also that might change at time of building permits. So if that's the case, then I would want that building permit to indicate if there was a change from the subdivision plan in the amount of impervious cover being constructed.
Right. Okay. And let me just ask, Gus, I'm assuming that that's a calculation that you've probably...
Gus Hootman with GD Hootman &amp; Son Inc., is there a performance standard that the township usually looks for over and above what's required? Like a, because it sounds like, you know, as far as I, as far as I can tell from the review, it seems like the stormwater management as it's proposed is compliant. Now, you're asking for a little bit extra for, I guess, for future permitting, which is a good idea. Is there a certain, is there a certain footage or percentage that the township usually looks for for that?
Could you come forward and state your name and?
Actually, I don't think that's even what you're asking. If you're asking for, if there's excess capacity, to know how much it is, there's no requirement for excess capacity, but if there is, they would want to know. You know, if you've, if you've got enough coverage for an additional 300 square feet of impervious in that basin, is that something that you can identify?
I don't, I don't know how much.
If you could first state your name.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Gus Hootman with GD Hootman &amp; Son Inc., we're the civil engineers for the project. I don't know how much, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't specifically look, break open the, the stormwater calculus to see if there's any slop or.
Excess.
Or excess that we have in the system. But again, if there's not, if there's a performance standard that the township is looking for to have some type of extra capacity, I would, we would need to know that.
I would kick you over to our engineer to answer that question specifically, unless, Angela, if you have any.
I'd say you could put a note on drawing saying that the seepage bed is designed for X amount of square feet of impervious cover.
Mm-hmm.
And then that way, there's a, there's a, no one has to go looking for the drainage calculations to figure out what that number is. It's right on the plan.
Okay, that's fine.
It's actually, it's actually useful for the homeowner, otherwise he's going to be faced with probably having to put a seepage bed in for any additions he wants to put on, because there's going to be assumption that it's not.
Exactly, exactly. I'm, I see this all the time, it's so much easier to do it upfront now. And the only other thing I would say is that it looks like all of the stormwater drains are going to be through underground drains. So if there is going to be, you know, decks or sheds or something else, is there an alternate way to direct runoff from future impervious into the seepage beds? I'm not sure how that would be accommodated necessarily unless you have long drains that, that can act as conveyance.
Well, the other thing you have to look at is each of these lots, when they're built, they're going to have to have a separate grading erosion control plan with a full set of calculations. So regardless of what these drawings show, I still consider this information just enough to show that it'll work, but the, the actual grading permit plan will have all that information, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
And, and yeah, and you're right, the, the actual house plan could be different than what's shown here, it's just conceptual. It's what's intended, but it could change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I want to go back to comment number seven, and I want to tell you the same thing I told the previous applicant. The choice of whether or not you provide open space is not your choice, it's the township's choice.
Yep, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And, and by regulation, you're supposed to present two sketch plans, one that shows the development with open space and one without open space, and then the township decides which they like best.
Okay.
Okay? There's a, quite a few large trees in the back of the property, which I guess the intent is to save those trees.
Yes.
I noticed that there's a couple, at least two of the seepage beds are built within the drip lines of those trees, which is not always a good idea. So there, there might be some, I don't want to say open space, but maybe we, we could de-restrict part of the rear yard from any development, so we maintain the viability of those trees if they're still viable. But again, you don't make the call, the township makes the call as far as the open space or the fee in lieu of.
Okay, that's fine. I guess I'm, when I was saying, I was saying that the parks or recreational areas in somebody's backyard doesn't make any sense.
And you can make that argument to us again, or to the board of commissioners, but we have to be the ones to make the decision.
Right.
And it might, to segue from that, to the earlier comment, to the extent that plan preserves trees, which help with runoff, which help with the overall design and green space.
Right, right.
That's something we'd encourage.
Right. And we, and as I say, it is not our intention, there certainly are some trees that are in the front where the houses are going to go that are going to have to come down, but the trees in the back are intended to be saved, to be kept, so.
There are some older trees on.
There are some older, there are a couple of, are, are, are four or five big ones, two or three of them in the back, and a couple are, are in the front, and they're, you know, that are going to come out, yeah.
Is there a way you can save them? That would be encouraged.
Well, you know, you know.
I know.
It's one of those things, and I say this in a couple of ways, they're big old trees, and nobody really wants to have their house in the, in the shadow of those, I mean, truthfully, you know, you really, it seems, it's, it's one thing to say that's great, but it's another thing, people don't really want that. They want their, the big trees in the backyard not hanging over their house, which is what those trees would be in this situation, so.
And I, I just, also, I'd like your engineer to look at the grading between the buildings. It looks like the, the grades are relatively flat. I don't know the intent there, but it might be difficult getting stormwater through the spaces between the buildings.
Take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
It wasn't a comment from township engineer.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the planning commission?
Yes. I first of all just wanted to say that I echo Maggie's comments on the character of the neighborhood, and I also wanted to add to that, that I'm a little concerned that you're noting that you're maxing out the height that is allowed by zoning at three-and-a-half stories high, because I'm concerned that the building, that these houses will be significantly taller than the other houses in the neighborhood.
I think, if I can, I think that's, sometimes that happens when you look at a, when you look at an elevation like this that's two-dimensional, and these are two-story houses.
Right, but over here, it says under your building height, that your proposed height is going to be 35 feet, three-and-a-half stories on the.
That says required, and it proposes less than three-and-a-half, 35 feet or three-and-a-half.
Okay, so do you think that you could clarify a final one and say exactly how high it's going to be?
Yeah, we certainly do that.
And then I also wanted to note that the historic commission passed along that when you were going for your demolition permit, that they had, as part of that, they had wanted to document the house, but that the house was demolished before they were allowed to do that.
I, I, I don't know, I, I, no one communicated to me that they wanted to document the house before it was demolished. I can only say that, I, you know, we had no reason not to. I mean, we, we sat there for a long time after we got the permit before it came down. You know, I'm just, I can't, I can't speak to why that didn't happen, but no one communicated with me about, about documenting the house.
I just wanted to pass it along, and I know Kelly's not here anymore, we'll be able to close on that one.
Yeah, I mean, because of circumstance, the permit was issued and, and the demolition didn't place for probably three months, maybe that long. It was just sitting there, anybody could have done it. We certainly had no problem with it, so I can't answer that.
Are there any other comments from members of the commission? Any comments from folks who are here tonight?
I just had one, a couple quick questions.
Of course.
Comment four. Regarding the right-of-way width, the township engineer said the township may require an additional two-and-a-half feet of right-of-way. Currently, Claremont Boulevard is 25-foot wide right-of-way, 22-and-a-half from the line inside. If we go to 25 feet on our side, it'd be a two-and-a-half-foot right-of-way widening. Just getting that, I mean, if it's, the township engineer does say "may", so I'm just trying to get a feedback from the planning commission as to whether that's going to be a specific requirement or not.
It's something we can easily do. It's not a problem, it's just a matter of knowing whether, you know, we have the space, we move the houses back, move the, move the street line back two-and-a-half feet. Chuck, do you know whether that's going to be something that's going to be required in your experience?
There's been plenty of subdivisions in the past that the planning commission has asked for additional right-of-way. The requirement, you know, to, uh, sub, uh, right-of-way for a township street is 50-foot wide, so, you know, you're obligated to provide that.
Yep.
Unless the commission feels that it's not necessary.
Okay.
Well, your review, you said "may", so that's the only reason I called for the question. If it's a requirement, we'll do it.
Have you asked for a waiver?
No.
No. So either you ask for a waiver or you do it.
Okay, well, then we'll just do it, yeah. We have plenty of space.
You can change "may" required to requires.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
Any other comments from people here tonight? Thank you.
And then, I had just had one other question. There was a comment about providing two parking spaces. That's, it's a two-car garage, is that sufficient, or are you looking for additional spaces in the, in the driveway area?
Require two off-street parking spaces, just please delineate where they are.
Okay, so they could be in the garage or not, you just didn't know at the time where they, where they were going to be. Yeah, that's easy.
That's fine, I'm just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, subject to the comments from the township engineer, we would ask that the, that the planning commission recommend approval of this plan as a final plan on the condition that we comply with the conditions of the township engineer.
Chuck, do you have any significant concerns about the comments that you've made if everything is a "will comply"? Is there anything in particular that you, that you would feel the need for us to see again, or are you confident in the, the review comments?
There's nothing engineering-wise that's insurmountable here. The open space issue, as Mr. Capuzzi brought up, if, if the planning commission desires to see that sketch, then, you know, maybe you want, you wanted him to come back.
Okay.
Well, we can make a motion to, to recommend conditional approval, subject to the finalization of the open space requirement or fee in lieu of, okay? We won't see it again, though, because this is a final plan, so it'll be up to the board commissioners. If we do that, then I think we should at least owe the applicant what our thoughts are as a planning commission as far as open space versus the fee.
Okay.
One other, one other question.
Or you can come back and show us two sketch plans.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you provide open space in a backyard of a private.
Well, you could de-restrict part of the property so that no development occurs. That's another method of doing that, providing the open space. It's, it's privately owned, open space. There's nothing that says it has to be dedicated to the township.
Okay, I, I see, I understand.
We'd be just, we'd be just de-restricting what's in the rear yard setback anyhow, I'm not sure.
Well, no, it's more than that, it's going to be like 50-some feet.
Okay.
Okay, it's more than just the rear yard setback.
Okay, okay.
And it, it's, you know, it's just a burden on the property owner that they can't do anything back there.
Right.
They probably will, but they're not legally allowed to do. We've done that in the past one.
Okay. I, I honestly have never, I've just, I've never, I've just never heard of that as, as being open space that the township would accept in lieu of a fee. So I always understood that it'd be recreational open space, that they want it, or they want money so they can fund recreational open space.
And they may decide that.
Yeah.
But we're, you know, we're talking $9,000.
Yep, yep, yep.
So it's not like a lot of money.
Yeah.
Can you commit to not cutting down these trees until?
Oh, yeah, we're not going to take those trees down. You know, we could, we could, we can.
Until the tree commission has reviewed your, and approved your plan.
Well, we aren't going to take anything down till the tree commission has, has reviewed. And we wouldn't cut them down anyhow. and we wouldn't cut them down anyhow unless they were dying, I mean, that would be the exception, because you'd be perfectly honest, if we take them down, we have to plant, especially those big ones, you know, 20 or 30 trees, I mean, there's, they're big trees, and so if we take them down, I'm not trying to be, but a lot of times, it's fair for me to say, we're not going to take those trees down, it would be silly for us to do that, they're all the way in the back of the property, and they create a really nice buffer, they're really, back there, where they're not hanging over a house, they're a really nice part of the property, and we would want to have them, so we won't be taking them down, and I can certainly, I would certainly commit that we won't take them down, the trees that are in the back of the property.
Or even the ones in front, until you've gotten the approval.
Well, we won't, we would never do that, I mean, that would be, yeah, that would be, that would be a really silly thing to do.
Some people want to save money on air conditioning.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're going to, we'd have to, we'd have to replace them anyhow, but, yeah, we won't take anything down until we, until we go before the shade tree committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we recommend final approval of the three-lot subdivision plan for Claremapco Homes LLC on 14 Claremap Boulevard, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that all the comments contained in the township engineer's review letter of January 4th, 2024, be addressed to the satisfaction of the township. Number two, that the final disposition of open space versus fee in lieu of be decided by the board of commissioners before final approval.
Is there a second? Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
This is a good moment. We're going to take a short break, and during that break, I'd like to introduce, to everybody who can stay, the two people who are here for the first time tonight. One is Gary Smith, who is our interim zoning officer.
Yes, me too.
And I'd like to introduce him, and maybe Gary could say a word or two to tell us who he is, and his relationship to the township, and how he's going to help us on all these zoning issues we may encounter.
That's a bold prediction. Yeah, now, my name's Gary Smith, I work for Keystone Municipal Services, so, we are a third party for the township. I assume the role right now is interim, so, and just so you do know, I am only working two days a week for the township. I've been working for Keystone since 2016, I currently handle two other municipalities as well, hence the reason I'm only here two days a week. Our company, we're involved, if you're familiar with us, we are involved in over 50 different municipalities in the tri-state area, so, we've been doing this for a while, and we do handle the building code inspections as well for the township.
Your two other townships are, your zoning officer, those townships as well?
Yeah, I'm the zoning officer for North Wales Barrow and for Wrightstown Township, Bucks County. Oh, okay. That's a interesting municipality, I didn't get a chance to mention today, but they just redid their zoning code in October, adopted a new code, literally threw out the entire code, started with brand-new zoning districts, because, similar to what you have here, with a lot of non-conforming properties, whether they be uses or structures, they essentially tweaked the code to eliminate the non-conformities as best they could. In fact, a lot of the new zoning districts don't even have setbacks, they basically say you have to meet the setbacks, the front or rears of whatever buildings are on the streets that you're on, so that's the way they're kind of handling that, yes, to try to, so you're not getting something way back or too far up, they're trying to make everything kind of consistent with the way it is, because they did have so many non-conforming issues, so, that was an interesting barrier to deal with, and that's how they're handling it. Now, they're much smaller than you guys.
Hey, thank you.
Is that, just curious, is that something that's very new, or has it been done by others as well?
That's the first time I've ever seen anyone throw the whole thing out. Most townships tweak the code one way or another, but they literally started from scratch with brand-new zoning, in fact, reduced the number of zoning districts dramatically, just to make the thing work, but they do have a lot of commercial residential all mixed together, similar to here. But again, on small scale, it worked well here, it could work in some areas, I don't know if it worked globally, because it is such a large municipality.
Large and varied.
Yes, yeah, like, again, you could probably do small areas where it would work similar and work well, but on a grand scheme, it'd be a little tough. Not to mention, you guys already have 15, 20 zoning districts, so to try to narrow it down to four or five would be a little difficult.
Your days are Tuesday and Thursday here.
That is correct.
And you are the, you are the zoning officer, even though on an interim basis?
Correct.
As under a contract with the township?
That is correct.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we also have a new member, Steve Welsh.
Hi.
Who prefers Steve.
Steve Welsh, Havreford resident for almost 10 years, hailing from the Paddock Park section.
Excuse me.
So, excited to be part of the board, I'm a professional engineer, geotech engineer, so, civil engineer, but dealing with anything under the ground, yeah, excited to be part of the board.
And what's your company?
I work for a company called Schnabel Engineering, down in, down in Chad'sford, yeah.
All the agendas are not quite so full, but when it's a, when it's a full one, it's a good idea to have some food before you come, or bring something, for quick energy. All right, the next item on our agenda is DeZine or Design Properties LLC, Joseph Taggart, this is preliminary final subdivision land development plan. Is anybody here on behalf of DeZine Properties? Chuck, were you expecting anybody here for Design?
Once again, I have not heard from them.
I wasn't aware that anybody wasn't showing up, I expected somebody here for each application. Yes, they were notified.
Is there a?
We're developing a reputation.
Are there deadlines for Design that we need to meet?
No, this was a new application, so, this was their first planning commission meeting, so there's still time on the clock.
They have a zoning issue to resolve also.
It was one of the ones that would help to clarify what, exactly what it is they're doing, and what their plans are, including plans for the proposed vacant lot, but they're not here, so we can't discuss that. The next item is a proposed, is a proposed ordinance for the township. Oh, the DeZine?
Yeah.
Well, yes, DeZine is not here, so, I'll entertain a motion to table a review of the DeZine, Design Properties LLC preliminary final subdivision land development plan.
So moved. My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? There is a proposal from township, previously read, limited municipal exemption, chapter 82 zoning, article 7 supplemental regulations. They're requesting in the following language, is an amendment to the code, to the zoning ordinance. Limited municipal exemption, the provisions of this chapter shall not apply to land and buildings or portions thereof owned or used by the township of Havreford for governmental use and purposes. Any comments from the members of the commission?
Yes, I'd like to speak. I was unable to attend the last meeting, but my understanding is that no one from the municipal government appeared to provide the rationale behind this, is there anyone here tonight to provide that rationale? Seems to me that we're missing a link here. Well, we, we had an explanation last time, the last meeting.
Well, the explanation last time was by the zoning officer, who said she was really not equipped to speak for it, but tried to explain it. So, we really haven't heard the rationale from the township, or the justification for why this needs to be done, and why it should be done now.
May I speak further?
Please go.
In addition, the county has passed on this, and while they suggested, brutal, they also suggested that the terms governmental use and purposes be defined to remove ambiguity, and if you look to see what the historical reason for the structure here of having the municipality not be exempt, it's, quote, "The PHMC would like to see municipalities model the behavior they want to see from their residents." It goes on to say, "Further information regarding this CLG program is available at the Delaware County Planning Department." And the reason the staff recommends adoption, but provided those comments, is because of the risk of unintended consequences of a full, rather than a tailored municipal exemption. So, I have an open mind, however, I don't have any information upon which to put my support behind this. Thank you.
My understanding of the adoption recommendation from the county is what the commissioners, what the township would like to do is lawful in Pennsylvania, and I'll ask Gary to confirm that, as far as he knows, but I believe it is lawful in Pennsylvania, many townships do it, we're told, and I believe the county feels it's inappropriate to not approve, not approve something that is lawful. On the other hand, they're plainly not, not in favor of townships doing it, but that's a political decision, or administrative or political decision for us and the commissioners. We don't, they don't have to do this, and we don't have to recommend. Any other comment? I mean, to me, I don't see why this needs to be done, or why it needs to be done now, and I'd like to hear from the township as to what evil this is remedying. There were also concerns that were raised last time, both as to the ambiguity of the, of the need for clarification of what is meant, as the county pointed out, and also the phrasing, the phrasing of the proposed amendment, which uses the phrase, not only governmental uses and purposes, which is what people argue and litigate about for centuries, but another concern is, it says buildings, this applies, provisions of the chapter, the zoning ordinance, shall not apply to land and buildings or portions thereof owned or used by the township, which means the township could own the property, but not use it, and therefore own it, lease it, lease it to some other entity, and the other entity would not have to comply with zoning, and I would be opposed to that, because there's no control over what, say, a private or profit entity might do on the property. To me, the most important thing in all of this is that the township have to, has to give notice and opportunity for a hearing to nearby residents, civic associations, and any other interested persons, and should not make, should not ignore zoning, comply with the law that everyone else has to comply with, unless they want to change the zoning, and then they can have hearings, and as appropriate. I mean, the commissioners can do what they want to do, but they shouldn't be able to do it without letting the neighbors, et cetera, know, and give people an opportunity to be heard. That's my feeling. Any other comments from the members?
I just wanted to make sure that everyone had seen the email that was passed around from Kathy Case about the impact of this for the Havreford Township Historic Commission?
I did try to send copies to the people who didn't get it, did everyone get it?
But I wasn't sure if everyone had a chance to open it and look at it, so I just wanted to.
She didn't, Kathy didn't give the same reasons, she just was concerned about if you don't have to comply with the, why don't you speak to it, Julia?
Well, and there's a few members from the historic commission here, so I think they're going to further elaborate, so that's why I'm not going to go into it in too much detail, but I think that the thing that I find in her letter that's striking, that is just the examples of the projects and the buildings that the township owns, that they've been going back and forth with them about to try to get grants and some provisions in place to preserve them, the Joseph Powell House is an example of one, I think that there's currently, at least there was, at least in the works, some roof repair work that they were hoping would be done there, and then they listed a couple others here as well. And I just think that that's an important aspect as a township, that maybe the board of commissioners didn't consider would be impacted by this decision.
When I read Kathy's, Kathy Case's email, it got me thinking about every other provision of the zoning ordinance, like impervious surfaces, does that mean the township can pave over parks? I mean, not that they want to do that, but we're not talking about the present commissioners or people of good faith and goodwill, we're talking about the future.
Right, and the checks and balances, I agree.
I think also the comment of the Delaware County, similar to Kathy's cases, but a little different, in that the, the concern was that not, having a provision that says the township doesn't have to comply with zoning, could cut off the stream of funding in the Commonwealth, and, from the Commonwealth, and maybe the commissioners hadn't fully considered that.
And I think our, these historic commission members will probably speak a little bit more to that, more detail, but.
So, I have seen other municipalities that do have this municipal exemption, I was not here last month, so I cannot speak to, I saw in the meeting minutes that there was a, was it just a handout that Kelly provided, of 37 other municipalities who have a similar ordinance in effect? The meeting minutes just said similar ordinance, so I didn't know, could my fellow planning commission members who were here, was it as broad, like, were the other ordinances as broadly sweeping as what is being proposed in this ordinance amendment?
It's a great question. I looked at a couple, some are not, the, what was provided to us at the last meeting was a list with the names of the townships, just a list.
It's not the actual language of the, of the ordinance.
Exactly.
I have the copy of it.
But the text, there was no text of any other provision.
So, I generally understand that there is a value to having a limited municipal exemption from certain regulations, but I do echo the concerns that this is a broad brush that's, that's, you know, potentially problematic in its, in its interpretation and application. So, I would just be wary of how aggressively applied this could be, not knowing what the goal is, and what limitations are being felt by the use of township-owned properties that we would consider such a broad ordinance change. But, I also recognize that. But I also recognize that from a timing perspective, the Board of Commissioners cannot act upon ordinance changes until we receive the County Planning Commission review, and now that we've received the Planning Commission review, they are able to enact an ordinance amendment. So we, we won't be able to table this. We will have to, if we, if we make no recommendation tonight, then we've met our obligation in having it on our agenda, and the board can, can act upon it because they've met their timeline requirements for public notice and 247 review from the county. So I, I feel like this is, we, we can't punt this for another meeting, so I feel like we, we will need to make some sort of recommendation.
There's a...
I think we wanted to speak to it, unless you want to respond to Maggie's?
No, I just want to ask a question. The, the comments from the county, they say that comments have been provided, including guidance regarding unintended consequences of a full municipal exemption. Does anybody know what those comments are?
Yeah, it's on your page.
All I couldn't...
Yeah, page.
I don't know.
I think part of it was the loss of the stream of income.
Okay.
Go back to the first section, the first, there's the recommendation, they saying, yes, pass it, but first modify the language because of that phrasing, literally unlimited, but they don't put it that way. It reads, have a second.
Sure.
The staff recommendation from the county says, "It is suggested that, quote, governmental use and purposes, close quote, be defined to remove ambiguity."
And that, that term governmental use and purposes is used throughout the ordinance in different locations under different zoning sections, and it's not defined in the zoning code that I could see. Are there specific sections of the zoning code that we feel should be excluded from this exemption? Personally, I think anything that has to do with landscaping and buffering of adjacent properties should be excluded. I don't think the township has the right to put a parking lot within two feet of a residential property or something like that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think my main concern with this is there, there could be some concerns for use. Obviously, the governmental use, it would have to somehow fall under a governmental use, but, you know, what is that? Is that a, you know, a yard for public works? Or is that, you know, municipal offices? Like, they have two very different impacts, so the, the municipal use aspect of it is somewhat concerning. So I don't know that there's a way, without going through more substantial revisions, to provide a definition as to what constitutes government use to clarify that, because we can't exempt, we can't exempt uses like that in, in what the proposal is, we're, we're talking here. But I agree certainly landscaping, buffering, and then general, like, bulk, bulk height and density requirements, like, the basics of zoning is to provide restrictions so that we're not putting, you know, a five-pound sausage in a one-pound casing, is that the, is that the expression? You know, so that we're not trying to build too large of a building in a spot that's not really accommodating for that. So I think that there's some general dimensional standards that, that should be exempt from this, and then buffering, because again, the purpose of zoning is to provide harmonious uses of adjoining properties for the public health, safety, and welfare. So the, the external impacts of landscape buffering and, I think, dimensional requirements should probably be exempt from this municipal exemption.
Okay, let me play devil's advocate. You're aware the township is considering building a significant, obviously significant, but a, a park over at the old former Brookline School property.
Sorry, a park?
Park, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And let's say, and then they've had several hearings on that, they've, they've been open to public, public has given their comments regarding what should be in there and things like that, and they, the consultants developed the master plan that I believe the township has adopted. And just suppose that there's a gazebo or something, some structure such as that, that happens to fall within the front yard setback. So you think it's appropriate that the township would have to go to the zoning board and ask relief for that?
That is a fair devil's advocate point, and no, and I think when I said my comment, I'm, I'm more thinking about, probably in my head, I'm thinking more like side and rear, like, wouldn't, whenever you're kind of abutting, abutting other properties, but, but abutting roadways, like, frontage, to me, doesn't necessarily apply. So I don't think that there's a clean way, I'm just thinking, I'm just talking out loud here, I don't think that there is a clean way that we could wholesale exempt the dimensional requirements from municipal exemptions, because it will result in these kind of limitations, which I would imagine the ordinance amendment is intending to eliminate. So, so again, without, without kind of having a list of all of the properties that the township owns and taking a look at what, you know, doing, like, doing, trying to hack the code, right, and figure out, you know, what are we even talking about? What properties are we even talking about? What potential for development even are we talking about? It's really hard for me right now to kind of give a very well-educated recommendation on certain exemptions, but maybe just to express the concern of overdevelopment to the, to the detriment of the community, even though I, one would hope that that is not going to happen because it's the township doing it, and the township has and should have the community's best interests at heart.
Right, so...
Can the township not? The township, as we explained earlier, has zoning power. The township decides on zoning. The township can decide to exempt itself from something. The township can, as you're, in your example, or I can think of other examples, where the township might say, "Well, this is what we're doing at Brookline, and we're notifying the neighbors, and if any, maybe they've already done this, if anybody objects to that gazebo, please come forward," and then people have a chance to be heard. The, we live in a, some say, a democracy, people can come in and have their views heard, and the commissioners, who are elected representatives, will decide on what they think is best. I think that's how it should work, and not, it shouldn't work because the commissioners behind closed doors, or not even the commissioners, this doesn't limit it to the commissioners deciding something. The, what are they called, public works? People who cut down trees or pave surfaces, they could just say, "Well, we don't have to deal with zoning, so let's just pave this surface or cut down some trees. We don't have to deal with, we don't have to deal with anything. We want to tear down, I don't know, the Powell House, we're going to tear it down. We don't like it." And, and this has happened in the past in our township, things like that. And again, I'm not accusing the existing commissioners of wanting to do those things, but this is for the future, this is forever.
So, so we have identified historical structures?
Well, we can go through the code, I would also...
No, no, I'm just saying, looking at the, at the exemptions, if we were to consider exemptions, we, we talk about landscaping, buffering, leasing property to other developers.
To, to private...
Private developers. Anything that has to do with a historical structure?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm just thinking that we have to, as Maggie said, we have to move on this thing, and we have to make a recommendation, and, you know, short of saying we don't agree with it, it really doesn't matter what our recommendation is, it's Board of Commissioners who make the final decision. So we put on record what we think the exemption should be, at least we've done our job as far as expressing our concern about, you know, giving them carte blanche over everything.
Does anyone have any sense of why the commissioners did this and why they felt it was important to do it now, other than our speculating that what it might be?
Articulated in efficiency or...
Well, but that's us, that's our view. We haven't heard, maybe there's some reason that they want to do this, maybe they've come up against zoning issues that they feel are insurmountable or they can't overcome. Maybe if these concerns are presented to them, they'll say, gee, we didn't think of those unintended consequences, and we want to go back to the drawing board and think about this some more. Maybe, I don't know.
David, let me say that I'm noticing in the minutes from the last meeting, Ms. Kirk said they had not, they had, I guess, interacted with the county, but comment hadn't been received to date. So now essentially, this letter or what have you, this document we have from the county stating this is coming to us for the first time, but we don't know if anybody in the municipal government has looked at this and passed upon it, oh, we like it the way it is, or, oh, let's take a look to see if we could work, try to address the ambiguity. So perhaps the best thing is we have to move the ball forward, is we sort of embrace the county's position and, and ask this and say, you know, with the suggestion that, that be looked at before final action taken.
I, I repeat, the county is not saying, "We think it's a good idea to, to abolish your zoning ordinance whenever you, that you no longer have to comply with zoning." They're just saying, "We can't tell you what to do, it's up to the township." There, there's no, like, burden on us to say, "This is a great idea, or we have to do it because you asked for it, or because it's permitted in Pennsylvania." Like anything else, the commissioners have to make a decision as to what they want to do, and I'm not sure they want to, I'm not sure they understand all the unintended consequences of what they're doing. And I, I think, and this is another issue that concerns me. We had a fellow make a presentation to the Planning Commission, a representative of, I forget his title, Commonwealth Planning, Ted Ritzick, and one of the things he talked about was the importance of communication between the commissioners and the Planning Commission, and that we should have somebody sits, sits on the, goes to the commissioners' meeting, and the commissioners should have a representative, they do have a representative, a liaison with planning, and that person should be here. This was just sent to us without any communication, and I think, I don't know if the commissioners would be troubled if we went back to them and said, "We want to talk to you about this." Seems to me they'd be receptive, so perhaps one of us could be delegated to have a conversation with, I don't know who our person is, because I've never seen them here, possibly Gary Hart? Does anybody know who the liaison with the Planning Commission is? I, I think it might be Gary Hart.
Do we know when the time clock started for this review for the ordinance? Gary, do you know when the, do we know when the ordinance was first proposed? Gary? Do you know when the ordinance was first proposed? For the November meeting or December?
It was here for the November Planning Commission.
Okay.
I don't know when it was proposed, so it could have been before that, before it went to, say, the county.
Right.
I don't know what the timeframe is.
Okay.
The date of petition is November 6th.
Okay. Because what is it, 45 days for ordinance amendments? Trying to recall if it's 30 or 45 days is the legal requirement, but the county has weighed in now at this point. So, so David, to your point, I, I don't think it's inappropriate for us to recommend discussing that with a representative of the Board of Commissioners. I just don't know that that's going to do us much good, because the Board of Commissioners can legally act upon this at their next meeting, and they likely will. So this is our, this is our last shot to, to make any sort of recommendation. So I, I think, I think the best way to move forward is, is a recommendation of approval with certain caveats for...
Why?
For exemptions.
Why approve something that some of us strongly don't think is a good idea? Because this, this would mean they can do what they want without any input from the community. They can put up a pickleball court next to your property, they don't have setback requirements, they can pave things over, they can cut down trees, they can tear down houses, oh, historic buildings, no matter what we say. So I think we have to say we don't approve it, or we would like you to give this reconsider, we can say it mildly, like, we think you should reconsider this, as pointed out by the county, there may be unintended consequences of what you're proposing, and we'd like to discuss it with you. We could say it in a gentle way, we don't have to say, "This is a dumb idea," but we can at least have a conversation.
Well, there's, I mean, so the way forward is that we would need to make a motion, and then we would vote on it, and there can be differing opinions.
I think if you say approve, you're approving, and they'll just go ahead and do it.
They'll go ahead and do it, whether we approve it or not. Marsh, did they have...
They may not.
Don't they have two readings on before they approve an ordinance revision? And there are first reading and a second reading?
I believe that is the case.
And they haven't had the first reading yet?
I believe they have not.
Okay, so they have to have two readings, which is two different meetings.
Okay.
And has this been published? Has the proposed ordinance amendment been published?
I honestly don't have a lot of information on this.
And also, isn't there a requirement to have a public hearing for any ordinance change?
Yeah, so it has to be duly advertised.
Okay.
And then if there's two readings...
So as far as...
I mean, typically...
We don't know, maybe that's already happened. I don't know.
There, there hasn't been anything at any, any commissioners' meeting discussing this ordinance. They, they can't put the cart before the horse, they could try, but they can't. So number one, they have to have a public hearing on this ordinance amendment, and they have to have two readings. So it's nothing that they're trying to hide from the public, but they're not allowed to hide it from the public, okay? And if we don't agree with the, with the text, if we feel that there should be limitations in certain areas, then we can tell them that, or if we feel that the definition has to be provided for municipal use, we can tell them that. I, I think we have to move it on or not move it on based upon the consensus of the board.
I move that we recommend that they reconsider this proposal. Yeah, we're not closing off discussion. Anybody else on the commission? Are there any comments from people who are here in the, in the gallery?
The green light is on, there it is. I'm Susanna Baruko, I'm the chair of the Historical Commission, and I prepared remarks, some of which you've kind of covered, but if I could just quickly go through our thoughts on this proposal. We're pretty concerned about it, and we're also wondering what possible benefit will removing review by commissioner-appointed commissions through the municipal exemption offered to township residents. That's a question that has not been answered, and I've asked it. And I'm not sure if township ordinance are for the public benefit. Why should the Board of Commissioners not be required to follow the same rules as township residents and property owners? The municipal exemption seems to establish a double standard, and I find that concerning. We're also concerned that a municipal exemption from the entire zoning code will put historic resources owned by the township at risk for demolition. The at-risk buildings that we see are the Powell House, which is the oldest house in the township, currently on the site of the Township Municipal Services Yard with a tarp on the roof for the past five-plus years. There have been some repairs. The township has in their budget, actually, I'm told, something like $70,000 or something to do a new roof on the building, but they have not moved on that, and I don't know, I've never been actually told why. The former township building is currently vacant with no proposed use and no plan to find a use that I've heard. Had this municipal exemption been in place, the library, also a historic resource, a former bank building with a modern addition on the rear, might well have been raised under the guise of making updating the library easier. Technically, in the future, the township could purchase any historic property, or as has been said here, any property at all, label it for government use, and demolish it. The township owns several historic properties that are listed in the Historic Resource Survey, Nider Hall and the Lawrence Cabin, the Federal School, the... Survey, Nider Hall and the Lawrence Cabin, the Federal School, the Grange. It seems unlikely, but the municipal exemption would give the Board of Commissioners the power to demolish or to alter, and alter these buildings in any way they so chose. Through the efforts of the Historical Commission, the township is a certified local government, a program of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, and that program benefits us by providing access to professionals at the State Historic Preservation Office. Importantly, CLG status makes us eligible to apply for grant funding for planning and construction projects related to our mission. It was CLG funds that paid for research on 12 properties on the township, so they could be proposed to be added to the Historic Resource Survey. I'm afraid that I, personally, I don't speak for the whole Historical Commission, but personally, I don't see the current Board of Commissioners as being terribly historic resources friendly, even though they, many of them on the commission were amongst those that wrote the ordinance. As an example of the 12 properties that were proposed for listing in the Historic Resources based on the work of that grant, the Board of Commissioners approved only four. At a minimum, I would hope that the Planning Commission would insist that the municipal exemption ordinance include a stipulation that Articles, I'm sorry, Articles 6 and 8, which reflect on the Historical Commission, and also on the parks, which is really what Kathy Case's email focused on also. My preference, of course, is that this proposal be rejected in its entirety. I don't think township-owned property should be exempt from the entire zoning code, and I don't think that the Board of Commissioners should have the sole power to decide on the fate of township-owned properties. However, if you feel that you do have to make a decision, I would hope that you would consider exempting the article that reflects this, that, excuse me, encompasses historic resources so that they can be preserved in the township. I feel like this is a real threat, I don't think it might have been meant to be, but it certainly comes off as one. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? From the public? Any other comments from the commissioners?
I just want to clarify, I pulled up the procedure for zoning amendments. So this is Act 182, Section 1102B, as in boy. It just says, "The Board of Township Commissioners shall submit each proposed zoning amendment to the Planning Commission at least 30 days prior to any hearing which is to be held on the proposed amendment, to provide the commission with an opportunity to submit its recommendations prior to final action." And then, as required by the state planning code, "A copy of the proposed zoning amendment shall also be submitted to the County Planning Commission at least 30 days prior to any hearing." So both of those have been accomplished, if this was submitted in November, our 30 days have been met, and it has come to the Township Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. And then subsection C, "Before voting on the enactment of an amendment, the Board of Township Commissioners shall hold a public hearing thereon pursuant to public notice. Notice shall be given by publishing a notice thereof once each week for two successive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation in the township." So the next commissioners' meeting is when?
A work session the first Monday.
So the fifth and the, I'm sorry, you said the first, I'm sorry, the first Monday?
First Monday is their working, working session, and then they have the regular commissioners' meeting.
Okay, so the working session is the fifth, and then the next commissioners' meeting is the 12. And then our, our next meeting? I'm sorry, February, oh, wait, of this month? Well, they've already met this month, correct? So we would be looking at February. Our next meeting is the 8th. So we're actually meeting before the next commissioners' meeting. I don't know if notice is going to be advertised at that point. However, if we make the recommendation tonight, that could be shared with the commissioners ahead of time, so that they have more time to consider whatever our recommendation is.
If we make a recommendation, they may decide to include our suggestions in a revised text and start the process over again before they advertise.
You know, I just have a feeling that, I don't know, I'd just be speculating, but very often people write provisions to deal with a particular problem that they want to deal with. Maybe it's Brookline, maybe it's other issues, but then they write statutes and rules that are very broad. I see it in courts all the time. Judges are angry about lawyers who are late, and so they pass draconian rules about getting things in on time, and the 99% that get things in on time or have a good reason not to, they get, have to abide by those rules. So maybe this is one of those things. I just think if we talk to them, that would be, might be very productive. Then we'd find out, and I, or invite them to come here, but I think probably having a conversation would be productive. We can go through the code and list all the things that they need to comply with, and not have nuisances, and lighting, and, but my biggest is that they be, that they have some provision that says, we won't do anything contrary to zoning without notifying interested parties, which include neighbors, civic associations, and other interested persons.
You can say that, that the proposal they have, which, contrary to the regulations, have to have a, have to be presented to the Planning Commission, or have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing's fine, and has to be done by the commissioners, not by agencies of the township. In other words, as I said, the people who cut down trees can't decide that they're going to ignore the code.
If it violates the provisions of the code, they can't do it until they have a meeting on it, a public meeting, some type of a public meeting.
And the commissioners have to approve it.
Dave, I'm curious, in that, are you stating that you do not want to see the commissioners have exclusively make that decision? It's got to be a decision that's made collectively with the township. It's not, it's not dictating, we're going to do this, we don't care what the, what the rest of the township has to say.
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
As I understand it, it sounds like there's something that's happening as far as decisions being made by the commissioners without any community involvement with this issue. And what we're trying to do is not make that happen, at least have a chance to talk to them.
Yes.
Okay.
Or at least it has that potential.
Yes, not shut it off completely.
I'd also just like when we talk to them to confirm that they have thought through the loss of the grant money, and the historic connection at the state level, and other things that would be lost by passing this. I'm not sure if they're aware that that would shield.
What was the date of the letter from the, from the?
December 22nd is the county planning.
County, yeah, December 22nd.
I think the county has like 45 days.
I think in the end, I maybe said before, we're not saying we want to usurp the function of the commissioners. In the end, the commissioners decide, but they should decide on the basis of existing zoning, if they want to override existing zoning, they have the power to do that, they just should do it after notice in a hearing, and not allow any agency that themselves, or any agency of the township, or private entities, nonprofit, or for-profit, to whom they authorize to carry out what they believe to be government uses. Some governments, and many battles over this, believe that raising money is a legitimate government purpose, and having concessions and stores, whatever, to raise money are perfectly legitimate government use, and so it's okay to lease property to private entities for profit. These are things that I think should be discussed with the community, because again, the township has the power to do, the commissioners have the power to rezone, to do it what they want to do, just like them to do it with input from the, in a democratic way. We, as a body, have listened to 10 meetings where people came forward, rightly or wrongly, but they came forward feeling their voices weren't heard on the comprehensive plan, and that there was no buy-in to what they were doing, and there was a great distrust of the, of the township, and I'd like to eliminate that distrust. I don't think in every comment it was justified, but that was the perception, and perception What are your thoughts on having one of us delegated to have a chat with, say, starting with Gary Hart, or finding out who else would be the appropriate person? Like next week?
If the sense of the commission is to do that, I'd be happy to volunteer.
I'd be happy to join you. I move to authorize Lou and myself to contact Gary Hart, or, or any other commissioner who, Jerry Hart, sorry, to contact Jerry Hart, and, or any other commissioner who is responsible for zoning and planning issues, to initiate a conversation, a friendly conversation, to reconsider this proposal, and to hear the justifications for it.
Is it better to speak with the township manager than a commissioner? What's the proper protocol? Again, this is one of these process issues where I've been struggling, actually, ever since we came on board, is to how some of these mechanical things work. But certainly Angelo is, he's the right person. I'm just thinking that from a chain-of-command standpoint, the commissioners usually, if they have a request like this, they go through the, either the zoning officer directly, or through the township manager. And I suspect that's what happened in this case, so I think we should follow the same protocol.
I think that's a good idea.
Makes sense. And, and, you know, given the fact that the township manager's a full-time employee versus the commissioners who are part-time, we might have a better opportunity of having a, a meeting with the manager before we have a meeting with a commissioner.
He's busy, but I think that's a good idea, and he can recommend what we should do next. If he feels we should talk to the commissioners, he'll say so, if not, I think that's an excellent
So I'm not sure that we necessarily need to make a motion then in order to do that. I think the, the motion might be that we would then table this discussion topic until our next meeting, so that it will allow us time to get clarification from the township manager on the rationale behind this. I do, again, I missed the last meeting where we discussed this, so from, from that perspective, I feel a little adrift, but this isn't the first time that we've been asked to make recommendations on zoning amendments without really the clarity and the context. So we've just been operating somewhat in a, in an island unto ourselves. So I think that's fine, but I think the appropriate thing to do would, would be to make a motion to table, and so I will make that motion to table this discussion item until our February meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion of that motion to table?
Just clarification, that come February, if we are unsuccessful with our meeting with the whoever we're in the meeting, we would act on the, on the motion or the ordinance amendment in our February meeting, one way or the other.
I think we have to, if we, if we make no motion one way or the other, legally, the township has met its obligation to provide us an opportunity to comment on it, so if we do not make a motion one way or the other, then we've lost that opportunity to provide record, comment for the record. So whether we, whatever the recommendation ends up being in February, yes, we do have to make a recommendation in February, we're not able to punt it any further, assuming, assuming, of course, that the commissioners choose not to schedule a hearing for a date prior to our February meeting. So that is a risk that we're taking by, by deferring this topic. Typically, though, these, the hearings for amendments are undertaken concurrent, or with, with a regularly scheduled meeting. Is that typically the case, Marge?
You know, the ordinance says that the, the Plan Commission, all right, the Board of Township Commissioners shall submit each proposed zoning amendment, other than one prepared by the Township Planning Commission, to the Planning Commission at least 30 days prior to any hearing which is to be held on the proposed amendment. So they met that criteria. To provide the commission with an opportunity to submit its recommendations prior to final action. So it, I mean, the way I read those words, it's given us an opportunity to say something. If we decide not to say anything, we don't say anything.
Yeah, that, yes.
You know?
Yes, no, and that's, that's correct, so.
They've met their requirements, so.
We've, we've discussed it, they can read the meeting minutes, and they can see our hesitation and our concern. It's not a formal recommendation, so yes, we have met our legal obligation to provide the comment, it's just not a formal recommendation that they'll be able to, to take on.
Well.
My, my question.
After we meet, we could work up, as Angelo was saying, at our next meeting, we can see what they're saying, and see if they want to reconsider this particular proposal, and go back to redrafting it, or not. And if they don't want to, then we'd have an opportunity to pull together, and then we can all think about it between now and our next meeting, and draft something that gives us our recommendations.
My, my only question was, is, and I, I always have a work conflict on the night of the commissioners' meeting, so is it typical that they would open the hearing during the regular commissioners' meeting, to hold the hearing for the ordinance amendments?
I believe that would be during the regular thing, they wouldn't have it, they wouldn't table that towards the end, it would just be during the regular.
Right, and, and, and you're not aware, Chuck, you're not aware that they typically will, like, hold a special hearing outside of regularly scheduled?
Something like that should just be during a regular hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the good part is, like I said, if you are going to meet with Dave, you raise your concerns, they may actually tweak the ordinance between now and your February meeting, so you may be looking at a different document. Keep that in mind. Maybe they'll answer some of your questions for you.
Yeah, okay. Chuck, did you have anything?
Yeah, Maggie, based on my experience in the past, normally those public hearings are prior to the regular commissioners' meeting. They've been that way typically in the past.
Yeah, they just.
You say prior to, you mean at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll open the hearing, they'll have the hearing, they'll close the hearing, and then start the regular meeting.
And, and some of, some of the bigger ones, I'm trying to think of what they were, but some of the bigger ones, they may have started earlier or something like that.
Yeah.
I think they have two, they have, it's confusing, they have several, maybe you're familiar with this, Gary, they, they have several times when people can get up and speak. One is before the meeting starts, and I think those people. One is before the meeting starts, and I think those people have to request and reg, yeah, register to speak. Then there's the actual hearing on that topic, and I don't know what the recall, pardon?
That's when they...
I, you don't know, I, and then, yeah, at that point, they tend to, I've seen some meetings, I don't know what the rules are, but I've seen meetings where they hear an hour of, of comments from thirty different people.
Scheduled time on the agenda for public forum, essentially.
Yeah. And then, I think also sometimes at the end, they have comments, but the main thing would be when there's the, the pending, um, motion or proposal, that's when people should be there and comment, and that would be at their regular meeting. Is that a conflict for you? At the second, the second Monday?
Yeah, I can't.
Hey, so you, you made a motion?
I did. Did anybody actually second it?
Yes.
You did, okay. So we have a motion and a second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, tabled. Any, uh, any new business, Good and Welfare?
Uh, Dave.
Oh, the minutes.
Well, no, I'm sorry, we do need to go back to, we never...
Oh, yeah, we have to, we.
The Jim Miller.
Yeah, we tabled Jim Miller.
Tabled to the end of the meeting, but no one has ever showed up.
Um, maybe they're still on the school kill. The, um, so entertain a motion to table the Jim Miller.
I don't know.
Miller proposal. We can't tackle it now?
We don't know what the.
I want to make, make a motion that we, let me see. We want to give him an opportunity to provide us with a time extension, so, make a motion, we want to give him the opportunity to provide us with a time extension, okay? And he's not here to do that, so we should, we need to make a motion that covers us as far as a ninety-day clock, but also doesn't preclude him from giving us a time extension if that's necessary. So, so we, we make a motion here, we make a motion to table the plan, subject to receipt of a time extension for the Plan Commission, further considered plan, and if that time extension isn't granted within, uh, the ninety-day clock period, then the Plan Commission votes to deny the plan.
Perfect.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we have the same issue with design properties?
We just tabled that one, because they're within their ninety days.
Because we, we don't have a clock issue on that one. Is there, is there, is someone going to, Gary?
Yeah.
Can you, can you, I don't know, it's not our obligation, but I think we should follow up with design and with Miller, to let them know that they have an obligation to be here and...
Yeah, no, I will, because like I said, I think we got emails that, emails were sent to everybody, they had, that were here to attend, and I think they, they all did respond. I know one of them, I can't remember which one, someone couldn't make it, but then they sent a follow-up email and said, "Yes, someone will be there to represent them," so obviously we got nobody.
Margie, are there minutes that we are voting on?
You have them.
No, they were here, but they weren't there. The people who were at the previous meeting weren't at the second meeting. Marge, were you able to include the minor comments I had today?
Yes, they will be posted that way.
Oh, great, thank you. Yes. I'm trying to find the...
Was that for November or September you had corrections?
The most recent.
The November.
They were really just on what we talked about tonight, and they were not, uh, major, but, uh, let's see if I can find them. My, what I sent to Margie earlier. Margie, do you have what I sent?
I don't.
Let me see if I can find it.
Are you able to summarize the changes that you recommended?
Yes, and I think I can actually find them, as I sent them. They're, they're pretty limited. Uh, there we go. The sentence, this is on the November ninth minutes, item two. And the sentence that now reads, "This exemption would only apply to government buildings for government uses." And the other sentence, "This exemption would not apply to a use or lease of a township-owned The, the change is, Ms. Kirk, Ms. Kirk stated that in her view, this exemption would not only apply to government buildings for government uses, and would not apply to a lease, use or lease of a township-owned building. So the main change is to say that that was Ms. Kirk's statement that, in her view, because she did say, as I recall, that, that she felt uncomfortable coming here without anybody from the, any Commissioner, and being asked to be the go-between between the, to present something from the Commissioners that she didn't, couldn't explain. She gave, she tried. And then, where it said Mr. Channan disagreed on the language, I said on the meaning of the language.
So I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Thursday, September fourteenth, and Thursday, November ninth, the correct.
You'd have to do them separately, because not all of us were here for both meetings.
Okay, fair, so we'll start. So I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September fourteenth, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Who is not here?
I abstain.
Yeah. So legally, you don't actually have to abstain from the meeting minutes if you weren't here, but it's a personal choice. But you can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay, and then I make a motion to recommend, I'm sorry, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November ninth, inclusive of Mr. Channan's corrections.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed?
I also will abstain, because I was absent from that one.
Right, okay, we're good.
Any opposed? Margie, they're approved. Good point. I circulated a, an announcement, I hope everybody got it. I wasn't sure that all the emails went through. I got one that was turned down. I think it was Angelo's, actually.
I got yours.
You got mine?
Yeah.
About the Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Education Institute, the PMPEI. I've been to a couple of those, that, that they've sponsored. Some are good, some are not as good, like most continuing legal education, they're uneven, depending on the presenter, but some are very good, and I, I think these are, I spoke to the, them, and these promised to be good ones. So if you're looking for an overview, they're only an hour and a half. The dates that are provided, the first one is "Building a Strong Planning Commission", "Municipality provides no guidance on, for how to be an effective unit serving the elected government, governing body and the community." So they're going to talk about that, which is some of what we talked about tonight. So if you're looking for an overview of Planning Commission, it's probably a good one, it's an hour and a half, it's twenty-five dollars, and we can ask the township to reimburse. Sometimes they do. The other one is managing the subdivision review process. I suspect that would be more nuts and bolts, and that's, first one is February eighth. Those three nights are not three nights that you have to go. Each one is the same presentation. You can pick one. So, that said, I'd also like the minutes to reflect the following, which is, Jack Garrett was not reappointed, and we want to thank Jack for his very helpful and valuable contributions Are there any other comments in the way of new business or Good and Welfare, and...
There's nothing to report on the comp plan.
Welcome the new folks, and, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you all.